Welcome, everyone, to November 27th Spokane City Council briefing session. Ms. District, you want to do roll call, please?
Council President Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Ulrich.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Zopone is absent.
Thank you. We're going to go through the tonight's agenda first. We have a few things we need to substitute. And the first thing is on page seven, and we're substituting, oh goodness, Jacoby can't read your writing, the resolution to add our selection to fill the hearing examiner's position. So can I have a motion? Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. And then, under ordinance C 36467, we need to substitute the form that Jacoby circulated at 12:01 PM today on the dropping annual budget. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then, on page eight, we need to suspend the rules. I'm sorry, it's page seven and eight. So it's the, it's, yeah.
Council President, if I may, it's not on the agenda tonight.
It's not.
It would be what Chris and Ginny put together.
All right, and that's the PD agreement that we have?
And that's to be added as its own item?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, so I will move to suspend the rules for the purposes of adding this item.
Second.
Okay.
Yeah, what is this agreement?
So remember, in order, we agreed that in order for PD to use traffic calming funds, we want some kind of agreement.
Oh, okay.
So that they actually spend it on what we are asking them to spend.
And that's done via resolution? So we figured it'd be better to do it as a separate item from the ordinance?
And it's going to be at 2023-107 as an attachment? And that was passed around at 12:05 today?
Hmm, okay.
So you and who seconded, please?
I did.
Okay, great. All right, so we're clear on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So moved.
So moved to add the item to the agenda?
Thank you.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're good to go. We have very few things on the agenda for tonight. However, it's probably going to take quite a while because there'll be people here that have something to say about it. And I was hoping that, but he's not here. Do we know if Gerald's going to be here? Joe Haines? Wanted to clear up any misconception about his office and the six versus three positions?
I'll let you know.
Okay.
Council President, I felt like you clarified it last week, but...
With us?
Yeah, with us when in his presentation.
I want to make sure that we get an opportunity to ask any more questions and that he gets to say it once again because I don't think it was clear to the public based on what kind of feedback we got and are getting.
Okay.
So that was my reasoning for asking him. And then, moving into the, I've got two here. Okay, then moving into December 4th, do you want to take it away, Mr. Jones?
All right, perfect. And just real quickly, I just want to say it's been an honor sitting next to you, Council President Kinnear, and it's been great to get to know you, Councilmember Ulrich, and just want to thank you both for your service.
Appreciate that.
And you'll be missed, and it's been a pleasure.
I'll be back.
Yeah, I know, every open forum, every Monday, you'll be here. Going into the consent agenda, number one is an amendment, and then this will be briefed by Rick Giddings.
Good afternoon. Fleet would like to add $500,000 to our value blanket with Pomp Tire. Important to note, we're not actually adding, we're not increasing the amount we're spending on tires. We're just promoting Pomp's to our primary tire supplier. They've been doing a great job and have earned a bigger piece of the pie over the last year.
Any questions on that? Thank you. All right, thank you, Rick. And then, Mr. David Payne has added again. We got items two through seven that he'll be briefing us on.
Good afternoon, Council President, Councilmembers. Do you want me to also do the last item on that I have, which is a special budget ordinance?
That works, thank you.
Okay. The first item I have for you is a value blanket renewal four of four with Atlas Copco Rentals. Used for compressor rentals at the Waste Energy Facility from January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2024, with a cost not to exceed $135,000, including tax. The next is a value blanket renewal two of four with Corbett Nor activated carbon out of Marshall, Texas, for the purchase of activated carbon for use at the Waste Energy Facility from January 1st to 2024 to December 31st, 2024, with an annual cost not to exceed $105,000 plus tax. The next is a revenue contract renewal amendment four of four with American Recycling of Spokane Valley, Washington, for the sale of the Waste Energy's metals, metals, ash, and scrap metal from January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2024, with an anticipated revenue of approximately The next is a contract renewal four of four with Wemco Inc., Spokane, Washington, for crane, hoist, trolley, and lifeline preventive maintenance and inspections at the Waste Energy Facility from January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2024, with a total cost not to exceed $60,000, including tax. The next is a contract renewal four of four with Wemco Inc., Spokane, Washington, for bridge crane maintenance inspections at the WTE from January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2024, with a cost not to exceed $100,000, including tax. The next is a contract renewal one of four with Vico Inc. of Raleigh, North Carolina, for air emissions compliance testing at the Waste Energy Facility from January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2024, with a cost not to exceed $140,000 plus tax. The next is a contract renewal one of three with Anatech Labs of Spokane, Washington, for as-needed analytical services for groundwater leachate and other samples from November 1st, 2023, to October 31st, 2024, with an annual cost not to exceed $50,000 plus tax. And the last one I have is an SBO to provide the budget authority needed to purchase, I'm not staying really great, need to purchase two loaders and a tractor. And the SBO will cover the cost of that. We've been leasing the tractor for about nine months. It doesn't make sense to lease it, and the loaders are required for both the landfill and the Waste Energy Facility, and our current loaders have by far exceeded their life expectancy. So the SBO is for $1.2 million. Any questions? Thank you.
I want to remind Jacoby that I'm on a lot of these as a sponsor or co-sponsor, so at some point between now and December 4th, you'll want to replace me with somebody else.
Thank you, Council President, and I got agreement from incoming Council President, Betsy Wilkerson, that she'll be taking over sponsorship of all these items. There is one for the settlement of property damage, which we'll get Resolution 2023-0101 that Councilmember Wilkerson is already a sponsor on, so if I could get a second sponsor on that when it comes up, that would be great.
Okay, thank you.
All right, perfect. Moving on to number eight, the consent item for the multifamily housing property tax exemption. This will be briefed by Amanda Beck.
Good afternoon, Council. Hopefully, this will be the last update on MFTE for the year. So both of these are in District 3. 516 West Cora is in the North Hill neighborhood, and it'll be for 88 units using the eight-year program. And then, the other property is 504 West Cinto, and they will be doing nine units using the 12-year program. So that brings our total so far to 23 conditionals for this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Number nine is a memorandum of agreement, and this will be briefed by Mark Pappage.
Good afternoon, Council. Last December, Spokane County was awarded, or I'm sorry, Spokane County awarded the NEPDA 1.5 million in ARP grant funds for reimbursement to us for design and construction of a replacement water transmission main in Freya between Garland and Wellesley. And this MOA just establishes the terms and conditions of that reimbursement. So, any questions?
All right, thank you, Mark. Number 10 is a grant agreement, and this will be briefed by Nicholas Antush, who is online with us today.
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm not there in person. I'm trying to finish up my last report for the grant we had from a couple of years ago. This is to approve a two-year grant from the Office of Public Defense for $186,000 with $93,000 each year for 2024, 2025, to support first appearance arraignment and investigator services.
Any questions? All right, perfect. Thank you, Nick. Number 11, this was briefed at committee, but we have the agreement amendment B with Salvation Army, and this will be briefed by Kim McCollum. If there's any additional comments or questions?
No more ones.
Nope, not seeing any.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Kim. Number 12 is a consultant agreement, and this will be briefed by Colin Quinnhurst.
Good afternoon, again, Councilmembers. This is the contract we briefed earlier this afternoon with Kittleson and Associates for public right-of-way improvements in the West Central neighborhood using TIF funding. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Colin. Then number 13 is the report of the mayor's impending obligations. And then, moving into the legislative agenda and the special budget ordinances, we have a number of SBOs, and we'll start with ordinance C 36471, and this will be briefed by Jessica Stratton, and then she'll have a number of SBOs following that to brief as well.
Good afternoon, Council. These are SBOs that we talked about at the last F and A committee. So what these are is at the end of every year, the Budget Office looks at every fund to see if any are in danger of going over budget, and then identifying funding sources to make sure that they remain in budget, since RCW says that's what we must do as a municipality. So the first one is the general fund, and what we discovered here and what really triggered this SBO is that the FIRE fund, which is a special revenue fund and is outside of the general fund, that it's in danger of going over budget by about 1.4 million because of uniform overtime. So in order to right-size their budget, I looked to see what was happening in police because we did a large, about an $8 million mid-year SBO, and in that SBO, we moved 2.85 million from the public safety personnel levy. And what I've seen is that police are expected to end the year under budget by about the same amount. So really, it's just moving 1.4 million of what was anticipated to come from the public safety personnel levy fund to police and moving it to FIRE. Also, in the general fund, HR is in need of a salary savings SBO just to move some base wages to contractual services. At the beginning of this year, they outsourced some of their HR needs while they were understaffed. So this is just moving it out of base wages into contractual services so that they can pay their bills. Also, what we have going on here is we need an increase of appropriation of about $400,000 solely to provide the PDAs' deferred tax payments. So the City of Spokane collects their sales tax, including most land construction, and then we just act as a pass-through. And so, we just need to send them more money because they've had more sales tax. So are there any questions on the general fund version? The second SBO, which is also part of that end-of-year adjustment analysis, is the Hotel Motel Lodging Tax Fund. This is similar to the PDAs, where the City of Spokane acts as a pass-through. We collect this tax, and then we send it to the Spokane Public Facilities District, and we are just collecting more than anticipated. So we need to increase appropriation so we can send them their taxes. And then, my final end-of-year adjustment analysis SBO was for the Workers' Comp Fund. We're increasing appropriation by approximately $600,000. We looked at this, the insurance claims themselves, the frequency or the count is down compared to 2022, it's just the costs of them have increased due to inflationary pressures in the medical environment.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Next SBO is ordinance C 36474 for the Office of Performance Management Fund, and this will be briefed by Dusty Frederickson.
Good afternoon, Council. This SBO is to move $220,000 out of the PMO's basic salary into contract services to support an initiative to go through a code recodification effort. We are past due, and it's something that we need to take on as part of housekeeping and keep our codes in alignment with RCW's. And so, it'll be a two-phase initiative. We're going to work with a vendor who specializes in this type of work. That's what the funding is for, and hopefully get it into a about a one-year project. Any questions?
All right, thank you, Dusty. We have ordinance C 36475 for the Solid Waste Fund, and this will be briefed by Chris Ebert.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. This is a two-part SBO. The first is an additional $1 million in funding for fleet expenses for solid waste collections. This stems from late deliveries of vehicle replacements that were purchased as far back as two years ago. And the second is for an additional $275,000 to cover increased insurance premiums for the Waste Energy Facility. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Chris. Now, moving into resolutions and final reading ordinances, we have Resolution 2023-0094. This will be briefed by Nicole Edwards online, and we have Andrew Chance in the audience if there's any additional questions from the Council from last meeting.
Good afternoon, Council. This item was previously briefed at a PIE's subcommittee meeting as well as the November, what, 6th briefing session, so just here available for any additional questions.
All right. All right, thanks, Andrew. Similarly, we have a Resolution 2023-0095. If there's any additional questions, comments, we have Nick Hammett here to brief.
I don't actually have a question for Nick. I have a question for other Councilmembers. It's been two weeks since we last talked about this?
Yeah.
This is week two. I was just wondering what people's thoughts and feelings were since we haven't talked about it for two weeks. I know there was a lot of concerns about February. I was wondering if people are feeling the same or one over the other? Kind of what are thoughts? Yeah.
Yeah, I continue to believe February is the best place for these to go, so I...
Both of them?
Yes. No change for me.
I'm not voting. Yeah. But if I were, I have a difference of opinion. I consulted with Mr. Boston, and he had a completely different opinion on that they should go on the February ballot. I've also talked to people in the community who I worked with on various campaigns. They had the same thought, that February was not a good spot for these. So, but I'm not voting on it, so it doesn't really matter.
It'll be the ghost of Council President Kinnear past?
Yes.
I know I'm supportive, for sure, of libraries moving forward. I think that's an important timeline of February for them, and I think that there's still, I would be supportive of parks for February also, but just didn't know how other people are feeling. Yeah.
I just want to say this now so I don't forget. I'll go ahead and support both of these, but I really am willing and able to help connect some of our neighborhoods that are looking for priority projects, to connect with parks, to help move this Parks One forward. I think it's a great project for neighborhoods. I think you could get a lot of energy and a lot of support because this is all about neighborhood parks. So if there's anything that we can do to include them and to, you know, really hit boots on the ground and see who is out there that can help move this forward would be, I think, great, and I think it'd be in your best interest to do it that way.
Well, I have the opportunity to serve on the committee, so in the well-laid-out research in-depth plan that Parks presented to us was amazing. A lot of thought went into it. I too support libraries, and I had a conversation with Parks, with their board. I would be supportive, but I will let them decide. They've had some additional feedback as to the route that they would like to go down, but if February is the preferred preference, I would be in support of that as well.
Yeah, I'm supportive of them going to the ballot, also serving on that executive committee with Councilwoman Wilkerson. Parks gave an incredible presentation of what it's going to do, a lot of specifics to be able to tell the neighborhoods, this is what you can expect with enough flexibility for us to be able to adjust based on feedback that's coming in. So I thought it was a really well-done presentation. Also, looking at the city's overall financial picture, I think that if these levies pass, which both of them would be good and are necessary, I think it will make it more difficult for us to pass a wider city levy. And so, but I don't want that to slow down the incredible work that you guys have done, so I'm supportive of both moving forward.
I won't be around, but I'm hugely supportive of both our libraries and our parks. Thank you.
So I would be voting by myself again. That would be tragic. Glad I'm not going to be here.
All right, perfect. Thank you, Nick. The next resolution is 2023-0100. This will be briefed by Marcia Davis.
Good afternoon, Council, Council President. This resolution is to approve the water system plan for the City of Spokane's water system. This is an update from the last plan that was approved in 2016. It has been reviewed by the Department of Health. We have addressed their comments and received the comments from the Department of Ecology and Water Rights, and this resolution will have council approval so we can have a final water system plan. Any questions?
All right, thank you, Marcia. Next resolution is 2023-0101, or yeah, 01, and this will be briefed by Scott Jordan.
Good afternoon, Council. This is a resolution for approval to do a property damage settlement for $56,723.70. This occurred from some maintenance for storm drain, and they dug up a communications line under, for Lumen Technologies.
And this is the resolution? We need a second sponsor other than Councilmember Wilkerson? I see Councilmember Bingle.
All right, perfect. Thank you, Scott. Next resolution is 2023-0102, and this will be briefed by Eric Paulson.
Thank you, friends. Eric Paulson, representing your legislative team. So we had a lengthy and lively conversation about your legislative priorities at our Finance Committee meeting last week, but I'm here to answer any questions or receive any new feedback you might have. No changes that I'm aware of since that.
Just wondering, when will we have a federal agenda put together?
Our federal agenda, unlike our state agenda, is, I guess the best way to describe it is it's a year-round process that because of how Congress operates, you know, not in session form like the state, it's kind of an ongoing. So I can send you what our latest earmark requests are, our policy requests. There's been so much focus on state agenda of late that it probably hasn't been updated in a few months.
There's one item that was just brought to my attention today that relates directly to BOKA that we may need to work on, but we can connect offline and check on that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Now, starting with Resolution 2023-0103, we have a few resolutions on here that Jacoby Byrd will brief.
Yep, thank you, Garrett. We have two, the first two, 0103 and 0104, are relating to the appointment of pro and con committees for the potential ballot resolutions that you all will pass next week. If passed, it's our responsibility to nominate pro and con committees. I have a couple volunteers for the pro committees for both the parks and the library. I have a couple volunteers for the pro committees for both the Parks and the Library measure, and so I'll put the pitch out here now. If anybody would like to serve on the con committee, the against committee for either of those ballot resolutions, please reach out to me at GBYRD@spokanecity.org. The next resolution, zero, one, zero, four, or zero, one, zero, five, is amending the appointments of council members to boards and commissions, and I discussed this at committee today. Two changes, adding incoming Council President Wilkerson to the Airport Board and to the Police Pension Board. And those are the only modifications at this time. The next and last.
Sorry, on that, I actually saw that there were more changes than that. Council President, or not Council President, but Councilmember-elect Dylan was also given some boards and commissions on that list.
We're developing, let's be having voted on the list. We're only voting on these two positions.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Bingle. Yeah, he is inheriting the appointments of Councilmember Ulrich. That is correct. Thank you for that clarification. And lastly, Resolution 2023 zero, one, zero, six, is actually not mine to brief, so that is, I filed that for Councilmembers opponent, Councilmembers opponent. That's what we talked about at committee.
And who's going to sponsor that, other than Councilmember?
Councilmember Wilkerson.
All right. Perfect. Now, moving on to ordinance C three, six, four, five, four, and this will be briefed by Tammy Palmquist.
Good afternoon. I have briefed this a couple of times. If there are any additional questions, I'm happy to answer them. We are going to try and get a meeting together this week to look if some grant funding might be a solution to offset the fees that we're unable to collect. So we're hoping to get that together this week and have more information.
Can I just ask, what is the grant type that we're looking at?
We don't know yet.
Does it, what I'm wondering is, does it cover other things, like, say, the actual cost of housing permits? Because to me, that's the highest priority, is housing. And so could this grant be used to actually waive some of those costs?
We haven't identified any grants yet. Just starting the conversation.
Okay.
If I can speak to that a little bit. So one of the things that we know about this, that these costs need to be covered. We can't, we can't just keep waiving them. We also note that our Sustainability Action Subcommittee is not in favor of us reinstating the permit fees. And so the conversation that I had with Kelly today was, okay, can we do both of these things? Can we cover the cost and also not have them be instated by, have the people installing them paying these fees? And there might be something there. We don't know. That's what the conversation has become now, but trying to find out if there's a win-win situation. And there might be something there. There's a lot of money that's coming in for green projects in that area, and so there might be something there. We don't know yet.
All right. Thank you, Tammy. Next ordinance is C three, six, four, five, four, related to the budget planning and budget presentations, and we have Matt Boston online.
It's four, five, six.
I screwed that up. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Could you repeat that?
So ordinance.
No, the screw that part.
I screwed up. Put that on record.
He's so important.
All right.
If Matt isn't there, I can just chime in that this is the ordinance that you all deferred a couple of weeks back, essentially dissolving the Budget Committee and establishing a Thursday, one Thursday a month, budget meeting with administration.
Can I ask, has anybody connected with the incoming administration on this specifically? I'm just curious if we've had any buy-in on this.
I haven't connected.
Okay.
All right. Moving on, I'll read this one a little bit slower. C three, six, four, six, eight, related to the City of Spokane's utility tax. This will be briefed by Tanya Wallace.
Thank you, city council members. This was discussed at last week's committee meeting to temporarily increase our utility tax on certain utilities from twenty-one, 20% to 21%. Again, it is just temporary for the year of 2024, and then presumably it would go back to its normal historical rate. Any questions?
I, in the, in the code, or the way it's presented, it does specifically say that it expires at the end of the year, correct? I believe I read that. Okay. So it's not presumably, it is for sure the way it'll be unless the council does something.
Unless there's another amendment to SMC. Correct?
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Tanya. Next, we have ordinance C three, six, four, six, nine, changing the zone for the context area four. I do not see Tavish Schmidt here, but this has been briefed at another meeting, so I think we're good there. Then we have ordinance C three, six, four, seven, eight, and seven, nine, moving down into the hearings. And then we do have one first reading ordinance of C three, six, four, seven, seven, and this will be briefed by Michelle Murray.
Good afternoon, council. Thank you. We're, the finance team is just bringing forth seeking a change in SMC 7.19010 regarding the awarding of grants. Right now, the SMC says that in order to apply for a grant over the minor contract threshold amount.
I don't think this is the item we're briefing, is it? I have downtown assessments for H1 and H2.
You're ahead of yourself.
First reading.
Oh, first reading. Sorry. I am so sorry. You were wrong 100%. I was wrong. I was wrong. I screwed up. I screwed up.
Now, when city departments want to apply for grants over the minor contract threshold amount, they have to come to council, get approval to apply. What this causes, some timing issues if they find a grant that they want to apply for and they can't get in front of you prior to the amount, prior to applying for the amount. So we wanted to amend the SMC so that now they can go ahead and apply, but if they receive the award or are awarded the award, they will then bring it forth to council for council's approval to accept the award. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Michelle. Now, moving into hearings one and two, we do have Amanda Beck here if there's any additional questions.
All right. A quick presentation, since it's totally unfair to expect you guys to remember anything that we do only once a year and at the end of the year every year. Thanks, Jacobi. So the revised Code of Washington and the Spokane Municipal Code dictates that we have a very timeline-intensive annual assessment for the Downtown Business Improvement District and the East Bragg Business Improvement District. So if you'll remember back in October, we did the resolution, which sets the hearing date, which is coming up on December 4th. The other milestone is that the assessment rolls need to be publicly viewed or available for public viewing by November 3rd. That way, it's 30 days ahead of the public hearing, so those were sent off to the clerk and posted on the date that they were needed. The next milestone is sending the pre-invoices. It's a little confusing. They look somewhat like an invoice, but really it's a notice of the hearing that's coming up and that they will be receiving an invoice in December from the Treasury staff. We did have a bit of an addressing snafu this year, so I'm hoping that we get it all corrected by December, but people will be getting additional notices sent to their correct address this week. And then we'll be back next Monday to hear from the Downtown Spokane Partnership, who administers the Downtown bid, and then the East Bragg Business Association, who is our bid manager for the East Bragg bid. So as a refresher, the Downtown bid has four benefit zones. Their assessment, they have a minimum assessment of 110 for most of theirs, and then depending on whether you are a tenant that occupies a suite or you are a property owner, you are billed differently, or your assessment is done differently. So for tenants, it's based on square footage for the suite they occupy, what zone they're in, and then even more granular, it gets down to what level of the building they're in, whether it's ground floor, retail, or an office upper, or something like that. And then the property is just straight per 1,000 of total assessed value from the assessor's office. So this year, we've had over, just over 1,000 tenants, and then almost 600 for the properties that are being assessed for just under $2 million in total assessed value that'll be going to the Downtown bid. And then for the East Bragg bid, they're a little bit smaller, so they have three benefit zones that mostly focus on the Sprague corridor. They also have a minimum assessment. Last year, we came before you to make some adjustments for the bid to make sure that they're keeping up with inflation. So their minimum assessments will adjust annually with the Consumer Price Index. So this is the first year that we've done that, so they bumped up a little bit this year. They have just 242 parcels, and then they bumped up a little bit from last year, $79,000 for their assessed revenue to $83,000 this coming year. And that's the gist of the process that we do every year. You'll hear presentations from both of the bid managers on Monday, since I talk to you guys enough, and I'd like them to get a chance to tell you what services they'll be providing to their ratepayers with their proposed budgets and their management plans that you'll have in your agenda packet. Were there any questions?
We've talked in the past about how to incentivize development of surface parking lots. We have one tool now given to us by the state legislature. I'm wondering if there are any plans to go back to the bid and say, we need to reassess how we're looking at surface parking lots, perhaps charge per stall rather than this blanket. It just, after DSP did their, hired their consultant to do an overall assessment of how effective they are, I think we need to go back to them and say, okay, what are the results of that? Because they wanted to do a complete overhaul of how the bid was constructed, how it was doing, and I'd really recommend that that be brought before council so that council can make recommendations based on that information that they got from the consultant. Because those, the way it's structured, the consultant said, this is about 30 years old. It really needs to be looked at again.
Yeah. If I could, sitting on the DSP board, they have been going through that process for the last several months, and I believe they've all but adopted their final plan for the changes, and part of that includes how they are charging. And so it would be great to have them just give a little overview in their presentation on that.
I didn't need to talk to you at all. I could just turn around and talk. But thank you.
I can certainly convey that to Emily with DSP. And then I think internally as staff, we're looking to work with them in the first of the year to try and see what low-hanging fruit we can implement from the Puma recommendation, and then work with them on the things that will take more time.
Yeah. And if you look at the Downtown plan, which I know you have, it talks specifically about surface parking lots, which, you know, 30% of downtown surface parking lots, we can do better than that. So that would be my ask. I won't be here, but that would be my ask.
Certainly. Were there any other questions?
Thank you, Amanda. Appreciate it. And that concludes the advanced agenda for December 4th, 2023.
Mr. Jones, thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the advanced agenda?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right. Now, I need a motion to cancel December 11th, the briefing, the legislative session, and the committees.
I move that we cancel all council meetings on December 11th.
Do I? Good. Any discussion? Okay. Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. You guys have three weeks. You can just play. That's wonderful. That's great. All right. Anything else? We'll see you back here at 6 o'clock. Thanks. Meeting adjourned.